Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful again for the safe return of our students and the rest of our school family from the holidays. Help us to work together in a united effort to meet the needs of our children and to create an even greater feeling of family within the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. Our mission is to protect and serve your children, and we ask your guidance as we work toward that goal, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voce.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Dysar.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine is not with us.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
2018, sir.
Here we are in 2018. Okay, and our first General Committee meeting. All right, at this time, this is an education item. I'll give the floor up to Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Dysar. Item four on the agenda is the People's Progression Plan. Ms. Holton?
Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you. You have before you, and I'm gonna go through it somewhat with you, so just wait a minute, I'm gonna explain it a little bit. The state usually gives us the People's Progression Plan to do early in the year, but this year they waited because they made some amendments to it. And you're gonna notice that the People's Progression Plan is very streamlined this year. It's a draft copy, and I did put draft on the cover because there are some minor changes that are gonna be made at the Bessie Board meeting on January 24th, but they're very minor changes, and I'll explain a couple of those when we go through. But the state has made a very streamlined template. They gave us a template, and all we had to do, the wording is from Bulletin 1566, so everything in there is straight from Bulletin 1566, and then we had to fill in the boxes. So the only thing that is from the parish is the box, the only things that are from the parish are the boxes and what we filled in, okay? So we'll look at it in a few minutes, but we understand that minor changes will occur, and an example of that I'll show you when we get to it, okay? So if you open up the People's Progression Plan, I'm gonna go through it very quickly, but it has draft on it, so now it is a draft. The first three pages are just the table of contents and the place, the first page, page four, is placement of students in kindergarten and grade one. It's what we've done forever, okay? It tells us, it's exactly what's been going on in this parish forever, okay? Placement of students in kindergarten and grade one. Placement of transfer students is the next page where you have to give transfer students who come from unapproved schools a test before they can come into the school, same thing we've done. Then at the bottom, the policies for promotion in 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7, notice they skipped 4 and 8. Okay. Promotion to grade 4, this is where most of the changes occurred at grade 4 and grade 8. The students have to pass the LEAP test with two, at least two basics on the test to be considered for promotion. So if they get a basic in ELA and a basic in social studies, they're good, okay? But if they get a basic in ELA and an approaching basic in math and social studies, they're not good, okay? So promotional decisions are gonna have to be made after the test is given, and it's probably, we're not gonna get these tests back until June, okay? So if you look at the very back page I attached for you, it's not part of the plan, it's just something I attached for your benefit. It is an outline, and it's a template, of every child that does not pass the LEAP test with two basics. Each school has to make an individual academic plan for each one of those students, and I attached the template so that you can see. This gives us a little flexibility. It doesn't mean the child's gonna automatically be retained because it's gonna be a preponderance of evidence that we're looking at. It's not just gonna be at just the LEAP test, it's gonna be a preponderance of evidence from what they do in the school on a daily basis, what their test scores have been all year, what their final grades are, and then you make an individual plan. It's basically a checkoff, if you notice it, so that we're just gonna check off what we're gonna do. We have to do two of the four things on here for each child that does not pass the LEAP test, okay? Notice, that was the, that's basically what the 4th grade changes are, okay? When we get to 8th grade, one of the things that's gonna be changed in Bulletin 1566 when we get the new template is going to be the summer school. Summer school can be offered, but it doesn't have to be completed. That's gonna be the new verbiage in the Bulletin 1566. But basically, 8th grade, there's a lot of flexibility. You can provide, you can do waivers for 8th grade to move them on to a transitional 9th grade or to a 9th grade camp, on, to Shawmet High as a 9th grader, or keep them in 8th grade. But there's a lot of flexibility, and Ms., the schools and Ms. Voce and Ms. Lometta will make those decisions when the test scores come in. If you notice on page 11, oh, no, go through it with me. Page 8 has the other thing that we're doing. It's in Bulletin 1566, but it's not in this wording. We are gonna have an AB/AB waiver. We have that option for 8th grade. So if they get an approaching basic and approaching basic, we can do a waiver on those children, okay? That's all gonna be dependent on, again, the preponderance of evidence that, for everything that they do. It's not just based on this test. Okay. High school and transition considerations. This is, we talked about the goals program because that's what we do at Shawmet High and at Raleigh to get the kids a regular diploma who may be struggling academically. So we added our verbiage at the bottom of that. On page 10, support for students during the school year. This is what we have to do on that individual plan for 4th graders. You see the four things, the student is placed in a classroom of a teacher who's been rated highly, highly effective. That's one of the things you can do, the student completes summer remediation. Additional instruction is, time is provided during or outside the school day in high-quality instruction, and the student is provided access to on-grade level instruction that is aligned to Louisiana State standards. We're very fortunate in that we do have Tier 1 programs in grade 4 for ELA math, and so that won't be a problem because we do have the Tier 1 programs. If you notice on page 11, one of the minor changes is gonna be at the top of page 11, and it says, utilize, this is at summer skills. If we offer kids summer skills, that would be one of the things that would complete their plan, okay? Utilizes teachers rated highly effective during summer skills. The, the state has now changed that to effective proficient, which is, highly effective would be a rating of 4, and proficient effective is a rating of 3, okay? So we have to use teachers, but that's gonna be in the new template. It's not in this template. Then the next part is just how we deal with students with disabilities. ELL students, same, same rules apply. Promotion decisions for special ed students are really based a lot on IEP decisions along with the testing. And you do know that we can't retain an ELL student based, just on the basis of that he doesn't speak English. That if, if English is a real barrier, we can't retain that child in the grade, but we will provide interventions for them. Alternative education placements, this is just the goals program and Raleigh alternative. That's the two alternative placements that we have. So we put that verbiage at the bottom of this, okay? And the next page just deals with the due process, and that's the end of it. Basically, it was very streamlined because everything is written in the Bulletin 1566. So we have to follow those guidelines, and the questions they asked were if we do anything in addition to that. So that's why we put the AB/AB waiver in for high school, I mean for 9th grade, I'm sorry, 8th grade, sorry, and, you know, and our other policies, but that's it.
Any questions from board members?
I have the same question.
Ms. Dysar?
Thank you, Ms. Holton. With that waiver, in a lot, the AB waiver would allow the child to move on with the restrict, with the temporal?
Yes. It would either allow him to move on as a 9th grader or as a transitional 9th, but probably a 9th grader.
Okay. I just want a clarification on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. It does, that's the one good thing about this, it allows the, the, the individual parishes a lot of flexibility. It does.
Dr. Kraft?
When we say transitional student, would, would that program be at the high school? They would transition to Shawmet High for a program if they weren't, if the superintendent so deemed?
Wait, transitional students?
Yeah. Transition.
The transitional 9th grade students.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, the only thing it does is if a student who would normally have been retained due to a score on a standardized test would be allowed to transition, to be labeled a transitional 9th grade student, be promoted with the supports in place and given, within the accountability program, usually you have four years to graduate and be counted positively in the graduation cohort. Those students would have five years. And you put the supports in place to remediate, to remove and remediate deficiencies if they're lacking in, in charts or in math.
If they needed those five, five years.
Correct.
If they hit the ground running, they could do it in less.
So that's why, so it's a way.
But this would be on the Shawmet High campus.
Yes, sir.
That transitional program.
Shawmet High campus, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to understand.
Right. Both there and at Raleigh.
Yeah, this is why sometimes the stigma of hanging around and transitioning still in the 8th grade, that's not much of a transition.
No, that's one of the reasons we're glad we have this flexibility.
Okay.
You know, all this stuff goes in cycles, and as we, as we get a little bit older, we know in education that everything is cyclical. So as a response years ago to what the country deemed as social promotion, there was a hard stance that was taken across the country into creating assessments that were high stakes and that students could not move to the next grade level unless they passed it. So that went into effect for several years, and Louisiana was noted as one of the leading proponents in that, when we put the LEAP program into place and did school retentions in 4th and 8th grade for those purposes. And then, of course, as the pendulum begins to swing back, those people throughout the United States realize that that was not working, that there are students who struggle because of many reasons, because of academic issues, because of social issues, because of community issues, and what those policies were doing were creating more and more dropouts and no, no supports for those students to be successful in school and then ultimately in the community. So the pendulum is switching, is swinging back now to say, you don't retain the kids because if you retain again, you retain a child once, you create a potential drop, you retain them twice, the likelihood of graduation is remote.
Right.
So the, what it is, what we're doing now with these particular policies at these benchmarks at the 4th and 8th grade, doing an additional evaluation of a student and moving them not in a social promotion standpoint, but they may have a deficiency, say, just in English Language Arts or just in math. So we are promoting them to the next grade, however, with the additional supports in place and the remediation programs and the transitional programs in place to help catch them up where they need to be. So hopefully, we've come back to a more reasonable middle of the road to be effective with each and every student. So that's the whole point of the policy.
Yeah. I think that's more realistic. Sometimes the pendulum can swing too far, one way or the other. So sometimes we can't throw common sense out the window, and every student is an individual, and we need to work with them to remove any deficiencies where they can achieve success. And once they're successful, success breeds success. So I think it's extremely important that we know our students, we know deficiencies, and we have a process that we can remove those deficiencies. So we appreciate what you're doing and, you know, working with the State Department and adding to these blocks there, something that's realistic. Thank you very much.
And, and we really do a great job at all levels of looking at benchmark tests, looking at formative assessments to find out what each student has a deficit in, not just remediating the whole class, but looking at a child and saying, this child doesn't know phonics, okay, say, so we have to work harder to get him or hard to know that. So we specifically look at each child. It's not just a one size fits all. And that's why these individual plans are gonna be like that for 4th grade. You have to do an individual one for each child. It's not, you just can't do everybody's the same.
One size doesn't fit all.
No. No.
Anyone else? Need a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we pass this People's Progression Plan on to the full board with the recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Ms. Dysar, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
That's it? And I'll be back in two weeks. See you.
Thank you. So item 5 is an executive item. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Item 5 is a resolution setting the date, time, and place of our regular monthly meetings. This is something we, we do every January, and basically, it's, as you can see, it's, we stick with the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month, except for a couple of exceptions in February and, due to Mardi Gras, and in December, I think, due to Christmas. But, any questions? Discussion?
I move that we accept this resolution.
I'll second.
I second.
Okay. Hearing, hearing no discussion, please vote your machines.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Okay, and item 6, Ms. Dysar, are you gonna hand over that?
Thank you, Mr. Long, yes. Okay, next item, personnel changes for the month of January 2018. Ms. Voce.
Okay, what you see are appointments made, and it's very nice to say, see how minimal the sheet is. You know, we are fully staffed, all vacancies are filled, you know, you have some leave situations and some transfer situations, but there have been replacements put in, so. This is for your information.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Voce. Are there any questions on personnel changes? There being none, we have a point of privilege. Dr. Lewis?
Thank you, Ms. Dysar. I wanna make an announcement this evening, and I'd like to read a letter to my fellow board members. For my entire 43 years on Earth, the St. Bernard Parish Public School System has played a central role in my life. In St. Bernard, I have been a student, a teacher, and have had the privilege and honor to represent District 9 on the school board. Now 11 years ahead of January 9, 2007, year go, 11 years today, when I joined the board, I am announcing my intentions to step down from my seat effective March 15, 2018. It's a very bittersweet moment. As superintendent of the Orleans Parish School Board, I have been charged with the task of unifying the school district. On May 12, 2016, Governor John Bell Edwards signed Senate Bill 432 into law, which is now Act 91. Act 91 provides for the unification of public schools in Orleans Parish under oversight of the Orleans Parish School Board and its superintendent, which will occur on July 1, 2018. This is a monumental task, and it's not one that I take lightly. I deem it best to focus my efforts and intentions into making this historical moment happen for the students in New Orleans. On the one hand, this marks the end of what has been a remarkable period in my life. On the other hand, during the 11 years, we have seen a lot of positive change in the school system, and I'm proud to have played my part. I know that nothing lasts forever, and everyone who has served in public office knows that the process of improving our community is a relay. All we can do is run our leg of the race with all our heart and soul. That is what I have done, and I feel good about the progress that has been made. I would truly miss the board, my colleagues, and all the friends who have, that I've made over the past decade. So let me say this to the people of District 9. Thank you. Thank you for your trust and faith in me. Thank you for your support and your help. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. It has been a true honor. So today is definitely a bittersweet moment, but I want each and every one of you to know, as I say in the very beginning of this letter, St. Bernard is home. And even as I look at my career, that is now, believe it or not, over 20 years, because of the education that I received here in St. Bernard Parish, it prepared me to go on to college and receive a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and a PhD. My career, and I tell this to people all the time, and I tell this to Kathy Boyd, the experience that I received at Andrew Jackson as a teacher, it has truly prepared me for everything that I've done. It was a school of excellence, it was a school of high standards, and either you were going to do what was necessary, or Andrew Jackson was not the place for you. And I really took that to heart in every job that I had since, because when we think of why we do the work that we do, our product, students, we have to have a level of excellence. And so I'm very proud of my time at Andrew Jackson. I had the awesome opportunity, just as Ms. Voce was becoming the superintendent, to move into the central office as a curriculum coordinator. Had a great experience there. Of course, we know 2005, Hurricane Katrina came. But I was very fortunate to be asked to come back the very first day we opened a unified school and to become an Algebra I teacher. And then transitioned to New Orleans as an assistant principal, principal, and an academic director, and then eventually to become the superintendent of East Feliciana Parish. But Ms. Voce can also tell you, just as I was preparing to even apply to be the superintendent of East Feliciana, I contacted her, asked her questions, helped to prepare me for the interview, and even during my time as superintendent, if I had a challenge or something I needed advice on, I was always able to call Ms. Voce. And I'm sharing all this with everyone this evening because everyone knows, yes, I am the superintendent of New Orleans. That's a very big job, as some people may say. But I can do it every single day simply because of what St. Bernard has done for me, from the very beginning, from Goche to Millidon to St. Bernard High, to everything else that I described in my professional career. So I can stand the test every single day and stand on a solid foundation because my hometown gave me that foundation. And so, yes, this is a bittersweet moment in my career, but I know I am doing the right thing. And just as I go from 40 schools to 80 schools, I wanna make sure that I give all those students, all of me, to make sure that just the opportunity that has been afforded to, in my life, that they receive that same opportunity. So again, to my fellow board members, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the great work that we have done over the last 11 years since we, since I've been on this board, and for the coming weeks that I will continue to serve. So it has been an honor, and St. Bernard will always have a special place in my heart because it's home. Thank you.
Dr. Lewis, how do you top that? From the bottom of our hearts, of my heart, and I just wanna say, you know, we, we're saddened by the fact that, you know, you, you will not continue the rest of the year with us. However, we're very, very happy and very proud of you, hometown, you know, public education and becoming the New Orleans Parish Superintendent, and for all of, all the service that you've given as an educator all these years, and you are definitely, you have succeeded, and we're very, very happy for you. And it had to be a very difficult decision, knowing your sincerity on this board and working with all of us for the last 10 years, and we sure are gonna miss you. You know, we've enjoyed working with you and for the last 10 years, rebuilding our schools and even, not longer than 10 years, or 20 years, that you've been in education and been, you know, a teacher and administrator and, and school board member. So, you know, we surely gonna miss you, and, but we do respect your decision, and, and we realize that, you know, you're making the right decision for, for you and for what you think is, is right, and we, again, we're just gonna, we're really gonna miss you. And we thank you for all your cooperative efforts and your tireless efforts working with each and every one of us to rebuild our school system day in and day out. And, you know, we wish you the best, and we know you'll be with us till March 15th, and, you know, we, we thank you for all of your service and for your friendship and for your fellowship on this board. We appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Long?
Yeah, just to, to add to what Ms. Dysar said, I'd like to say thanks too for being the, the type of board member you've been for us. In fact, I can remember when you first came on the board. You and I had been sitting next to each other. You know, L E and L O, we, we, we sit close together all the time, but, and I can remember when he first came on the board. He, he mentioned, he says, you know, one day I'm gonna be a superintendent. And I, I really didn't, didn't think he would be at that time, but after seeing him in operation and seeing how he works and how professional he's been and how he's helped our school system, I, I realize, yeah, this guy has gone places. So thanks again for all your hard work and dedication, and we're gonna miss you. Thank you.
Ms. Dysar? Mr. Gaines?
Well, you mentioned about products, and you know you're one of mine. At St. Bernard High, this gentleman took all my classes, you know, computer theory, computer science, and he aced every one of my tests, and so I'm so proud of you.
Anyone else? Dr. Kraft?
Dr. Henderson-Lewis, you make us proud. A native St. Bernard had come up as a little tyke, went to other schools, progressed, worked in the, in the school system, and went on to be superintendent. Orleans have, Orleans has found a winner. You're a winner. You're gonna do well with those 80 schools, and we have great confidence in you. I remember appointing you to the chairmanship of the Education Committee not too long after you became a school board member. I saw in you some potential that was just lofty, and your goals are tremendous, and we want you to continue on and do a great job. we want you to continue on and do a great job, not only for Orleans Parish, but set the standards, set the standards for Louisiana and the nation, because you have so much untapped potential, and we appreciate and love you, my good man. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Ms. Vouchet? Okay. Well, don't know exactly what to say to this, you know, and I hope I, you know, you get emotional when you go through these, but I think as all of our young people out there are listening, they really need to take a very good look at this young man's life and what they can aspire to do and aspire to be as a product of our community and our school system, as you start out just really fresh, you're four, you're five, you're six years old, and you look up to people and say, well, you know, I can do that, too. And how generous he's been with his time with our young people. I know that, you know, as Henderson progressed through our school system, I remember, can go back to the old JTPA days, as a student at St. Bernard and then moving into college, very good man by the name of Al Waller hired him, even as a very young student, and worked...
In the right grade level to be a tutor, but yes.
Uh huh. Tutor, tutor for the JTPA program with our students, and then he went on to college and obviously attained very high levels of academic achievement and came back to this community to do what he did for young people like him as they moved throughout the system. And the potential that he had, the drive that he's always had, the goals that he has set, and as he gathered all that information, you know, all of us, as we go through the ranks, we have our mentors, we have people that we look up to, people that help us along the way, and, you know, he's named a few, but you have to have that inner drive and that determination that he has to succeed and then to give back. And I think that is really the most generous part of him, and that's the thing that you admire the most, because there are many people, or some people, that can go out in this world and achieve, and they achieve, and it's all for themselves. But when you can give back and influence the youth within your community and the outreach within the greater New Orleans area, that's, that's really inspiring. That is something that is wonderful. You know, usually you make these kind of statements when people retire, and then everybody starts saying all these good things about him, but as he says in his letter, his forty-three years on this earth, you know, if, if I had a son, I couldn't be prouder of him in that capacity, and it's a very young man. So at the age of forty-three, what he's been able to accomplish, and I think we're going to be looking at some other wonderful accomplishments along the way, because he's certainly not finished yet. This is not one of those retirement parties. This is one of those, I'm taking the next step, and we're only looking for bigger and better things, and then we'll get to say, you know, we knew him when, and I really, truly believe that. And I hope that at some point in his long career, that it brings him back here to St. Bernard in, in, who knows, in some other capacity, that he will just greatly influence again, more directly, all of the children within, within this parish. So, you know, I just want to congratulate him on all of his accomplishments. I know what a big endeavor he is undertaking now, where he has to devote a lot of his time to that, and then he'll conquer that and move on to the next goal. So, you know, Dr. Henderson Lewis, we thank you, we wish you well. We know you can do great things, and just as much as you've learned from me, I learn from you now, too, and so it becomes more of colleagues working together and solving problems together. So thank you for everything you've done for the school system and our children, and we look to even greater things in the future. Okay, Mr. Campbell?
You've been teaching.
As Mr. Gaines pointed out, and I always come up with something like, you know, one of my former students, of all the students that I've had, you were one of them.
That's right.
You'll catch that after one. Now, he started as a freshman, believe it or not, started with me first period and ended the last period, sixth period. I applaud you for being able to take me to periods of time, but you, you certainly proved yourself, and I'm indeed very proud and honored to have taught you, to have known you, to have served with you, and I wish you the very best in the future.
Thank you. To Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Ms. Dice. I, too, just wanted to say that I'm honored to have served with you, and I wish you the best in your task at hand, and it is a huge task. So good luck to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Egan?
Man, you could have hit me with a feather and put me there, because I had no inkling of this. I don't know if everyone else knew. All I can say is, in my dealings with you, for the years you've been on this, you did a fantastic job. And believe me, when I say this, before you, there's been many people that upset, some of them in that same seat, that I know did the fantastic job. You are one of the tops with them, if not the tops. But again, in deference to those gentlemen and ladies who served prior to you, you showed that that is what you were concerned with, our children.
Yes, sir.
And you've shown it by what you're doing now. You've taken over, boy, you've got bigger shoes than I thought, but you're taking over an awful responsibility. And when I say an awful responsibility, because I don't have to tell you that it's going to be, it's going to be tough, and you know it's going to be tough, but if anybody can handle it, Henderson Lewis Junior, Ph.D., can and will do it. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. England?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Lewis, it's been an honor to serve with you. You have shown your professionalism on this board, and I hope the person who sits in that seat is only half as good as what you are, and then we will have someone that's good. All right? So good luck to you and for you and the family.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Yeah, I just like to take this opportunity for all the kind words that have been shared here to me tonight. I really appreciate it. But just as it was said, when the Egan pointed to the sign, my entire career has been about children, and it will always be about children. And I'm very thankful, as I thank you all for the partnership and the teamwork that we've exhibited over the last several years. I'm also very thankful for, and I know Mr. Campbell and Mr. Gaines talked about being my teacher, but it's no matter, I'm not sure if she's still in here, but she was also my teacher in high school as well, and so, you know, I've just been blessed with so many people, but I'm also blessed with a beautiful and a wonderful family. And of course, I could not have done any of this without the support of my family. And I'm very thankful to them, because as you all know and I shared before, this responsibility that I have today, it takes a lot of me. You all can recall even from many meetings, sometimes when I leave here, I have to go back to New Orleans because there's another meeting that's happening sometime. And so I'm very thankful, again, to my family for all their support and, and understanding, as I, as often I tell people, serve other people's children and families, but I know it's the right thing to do, because, again, I know that my life is really blessed, because I bless others every day, and I try my best to do that. And so I know that God continues to bless me, and I'm very thankful for it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Lewis.
Okay, Superintendent's recommendation, Ms. Vouchet?
Just, well, the only thing I have to say at this point, no, at the regular school board meeting, obviously, since this is the first meeting of 2018, we, there'll be an election of offices for the board, we will sign the appropriate signature resolutions. Super news will be at the regular board meeting rather than this one, because it will focus on the students of the year, and those interviews just took place today, so they wanted to wait and do the filming and have that super news ready for the regular board meeting. On Friday, January nineteenth, I just want to make sure everybody around this horseshoe is invited, and anyone in the public to, we have our own version of that Top Chef competition, where they're narrowing it down to two, two students in the program, and that, I guess, cook-off is going to be at the MoMA Center on Friday night, January nineteenth, at six o'clock, and the kids will be doing it live, and we, it's a fundraiser for their program. So if anyone is interested in attending, they need to, you know, contact Sherman High School for a ticket, and anyone here to let me know if they wish to attend that competition. The, our Professional Development Day, as we know, the Student Holiday is Monday, Martin Luther King Holiday is Monday, January fifteenth, but that Tuesday, the sixteenth, the students are off school, but the teachers will be here for Professional Development on that day. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Is there a motion to adjourn? So motion, Mr. Campbell, second of Ms. Saseveta. All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.